Has started.
Start recording the meeting and again, we're going to call the order of commissioners meeting at 10:03. We would look now for any public comment or items not appearing on the meeting that has joined up. We'd like to offer. Okay, hearing none. We're going to establish the quorum. Again, this is Mike Pipe. I'm coming to you from the Willough Bank building. Commissioner Higgins?
Commissioner Higgins reporting in from my house.
Commissioner Durson recording.
Okay, we have a quorum. We are going to proceed then on our agenda to our next item, and that is going to be the minutes made 21st Board of Commissioners meeting, and that was from one week ago. Would there be a motion to approve those minutes?
Motion to approve the meeting minutes from May 21st.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay. We are actually going to turn the camera over if I can make this work. We're going to flip this camera around for for our next two items. We have joining us District Attorney Bernie Cantornau. So we'll turn the floor over to you, Bernie.
Morning, gentlemen. We have two items on your defer to employee District Attorney's office. One staff, one lawyer to bring them back from furlough. We have not been accepting filings of complaints on normal, non-serious matters for the last two and a half months. As of next Monday, police will begin filing all complaints and the backlog that has been either postponed, continued, or not filed. So I'm requesting to bring back our one staff member or one paralegal and our one attorney who have been furloughed. I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that the Deputy District Attorney Sean McGraw voluntarily furloughed himself. He did that so that staff could remain employed. He was, he had the ability to do that because he's further along in his career. The difference in the, his salary and staff allowed us to not furlough two employees, two staff members. I have to, I want to publicly thank him for his dedication to the office and to the county, and I'm really looking forward to bringing them both back.
Thank you.
I would say I really thank yourself and Sean for what you've done over the past two and a half months.
I would like to also indicate my gratitude to not only yourself. I know you made your salary personal sacrifice, but also on the, in the case of Sean, I believe he sacrificed his salary as well. And I think both, both your actions indicate your dedication to your office and certainly your commitment to taking care of the citizens of Center County.
Thank you. I appreciate that very much.
Okay, well said. And attorney, at this time, we'd look for a motion to approve those two items for the District Attorney's office.
Motion to approve the two items under Personnel COVID-19 Planning in Response for the District Attorney's Office.
I will second that.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion questions, questions on that?
None.
Hearing and seeing them, all in favor of that motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All opposed, say nay? The motion has carried. Okay. Thank you again, Bernie. Appreciate it. Thank you. Moving on to our next item, we have consideration for Public Defender's Office. And if Mr. Crowley has joined us by chance, or if, if not, we will turn it over to Margaret for this item.
Thank you. I'm having some internet problems this morning, so you may have to help me with the agenda items. I believe the first item is for the return of Summer Coral, and the second item is for the return of Janet Pourman. They are both, Janet Pourman's a legal secretary in the, in the Public Defender's Office. They were, these two items were included on our Tuesday agenda, and after some further discussion, these individuals are prepared and ready to return to the Public Defender's Office effective Monday, June 1st.
That was perfect, Margaret. Yep, that's, that's, that's perfect. Okay. Any questions on these two items for Ms. Coral and Ms. Pourman?
None.
Hearing no questions of Margaret? I'm sorry, was that a question or just somebody saying, no, they're good to go?
I just said, no, I'm good to go.
Okay. All right. Then at this time, we'll look for a motion.
Motion to approve the two items for Public Defender under Personnel COVID-19 Planning in Response.
I will second that.
It has been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion is carried. Okay. We're going to move into our transportation section, and we have four, or I'm sorry, excuse me, five approvals of extension of furlough, and we do have our Director of Transportation on the line, and we're going to turn it over to Mr. Lamison at this point. Dave, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you. Yeah, I would like to ask for you to consider extending the furloughs for another two weeks. Currently, we're running about 35 to 40% of our normal shared ride trips. We're seeing the increase start now with, with things opening up and getting requests for next week. So at least through another two weeks, we're good with manpower without those folks. So, you know, rather than have people sitting around doing nothing, let's extend their furlough if we can and, and check it again in a couple of weeks and see where we're at.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. And for the record, this would be for the extension of furlough for Rhonda Kelly, Department Clerk 3, and then for four vehicle operators, Thomas Berger, Vernon Wallace, Susan Warner, and Pam Witherite. If there's no further questions or comments, we would look for a motion to consider the approval.
There we go. We didn't manage to get the mic muted off. Like to make the motion to consider the five items for transportation under Personnel COVID-19 Planning in Response.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on that? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. The motion carries unanimously. Moving on, we have a item to consider for our Waits and Measures Office. Margaret will turn this over to you.
This is a request for your consideration to approve the reinstatement of Ron Williams, our Sealer for Waits and Measures. He would return on Monday. Ron is also very integral to the operations of our Elections Office and is very important to have on the premises starting Monday. So I have talked with him, and he is more than willing to return on Monday if you so approve.
Thank you, Margaret. Any questions, comments, feedback on this item for Waits and Measures?
Just wanted to mention that Ron is one of the many hardworking and dedicated Center County employees, and happy to see you back on staff full-time.
I would also add, if I may, with more businesses opening, he is now behind with getting some of his sealing work done. So he, he, there is work for him to be doing as well after the election.
Thank you very much, Margaret. Okay. We look then for a motion to reinstatement of Mr. Ronald Williams.
Motion to approve the reinstatement of Ronald Williams, Sealer, Waits and Measures.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay? Motion is carried. Okay. Thank you very much, Margaret. We have a final item, which would be to consider extension of temporary furloughs, partial reductions of hours for non-court related offices. Margaret, is there anything to discuss for this item?
No, no specific items to add to this, other than I believe there are some offices that still could maintain a furlough status. I don't know if Tom is on the phone this morning, if he, if he could give us any new numbers, but with today's actions, our numbers are lower, and this is something.
Yeah, I've just updated, I've updated the spreadsheet to reflect those numbers, and right now, there are 23 individuals on full-time furlough, and there would be 17 individuals on part-time, and we would currently then have 20 vacancies. So that would be, those totals combined, we would have 40 people on, on furlough and then 20 vacant positions at this point. And there's a variety of different offices, but they would be, again, non-court offices.
Okay. So, Margaret, is there a recommendation or action we need to take on this?
Recommendation would be to consider extension of furloughs for two weeks until two weeks from tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. Would there be a motion to that effect?
Yeah, just give me a sec. I'm trying to nail down what the date would be two weeks out. That would be the 12th of June, Margaret? Or Mike?
Let me look at my.
Yeah, that would be correct.
All right. So I will make the motion to extend the temporary furloughs, partial reduction of hours for non-court related offices for two additional weeks till Friday, the 12th of June.
And I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion, comments on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Okay. Thank you, Margaret and Tom. We're going to be moving on to the reopening of Center County item, and this would be the consideration of a policy outlining the protocols for working in county offices during the COVID-19 public health crisis. And we'll turn this over at this point to Margaret.
Earlier this week, I communicated with, can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Earlier this week, I communicated with our department heads and elected officials about the, about county operations as we move into the green phase. I indicated to them that we would be talking about protocols for the green phase today with the Board of Commissioners and provide any guidance to them following. The protocols that we have in place for, that we've had in place during the yellow phase would mostly stay intact. I believe that would be, that would be the recommendation, and with, with some changes. Again, I, as I mentioned earlier, I am working without my internet this morning, and so I'm somewhat at a disadvantage. But basically, we would be focusing on what protocols need to be in place for employees to work in our county offices during the COVID-19 pandemic, regardless of what phase it is actually. So I did send a draft document out, and I can go through the points that are in that if you would like me to, Commissioner Pipe. Most everything remains intact from our guidance under the yellow phase. I am recommending that we, that you consider removing the prohibition of traveling outside of the county for work-related events. We do have individuals who for work reasons need to be traveling, and I think that could be lifted at this point in time. But basically, we would be asking employees who are working remotely to continue to do so. Offices that require employees to be on-site must observe physical distancing with six feet between individuals. Employees should not congregate in common areas or break rooms unless physical distancing of six feet between employees is observed. Time in an office should be limited to essential work. That is, and that is work that cannot be handled remotely. And as previously requested, time in an office needs to be coordinated with others to avoid multiple people in the, in the same space at the same time. That would be not following the six feet physical distancing. All employees are required to wear masks, and if an employee is in a single office with a door that closes, it may be removed, but only in those circumstances. This is, requirement is mandatory. It's not optional. And to that end, we are also proposing this morning for your consideration, a specific COVID-19 policy for universal masking that I can talk about in a minute. But let me just finish with the, the actual protocols. Out-of-county travel is permitted if essential. However, unless there is a safety reason, employees should travel alone. That is, employees should not travel in a vehicle together. If there is a safety or regulatory reason, for example, transporting a client or a consumer of ours, and it's necessary for more than one staff person to be in the car at the same time, we would have to allow that under state regulations, but they would be asked to absolutely wear their mask under those circumstances. And again, employees are required to report any symptoms or exposure to COVID-19 to an immediate supervisor, and department heads and elected officials would report this information to our, our risk manager. Those protocols together are the recommendation of how our employees should the requirements that we're asking of them to maintain a safe and virus-free workplace. So I'll stop there and ask if there are any questions, comments?
Well, I've got one, Margaret. For exceptions to the single person in a car rule, I'm assuming sheriff's deputies transporting inmates, there's probably a requirement for there to be two deputies in the car. So that, that would be an exception, right?
That would be a safety reason.
Okay.
And we, if you would prefer, we could fell out. It's just that we probably wouldn't be able to think of all the different possibilities here, but it would be children and youth workers who are transporting a child, perhaps. It would be our, it could be probation, transporting someone. It would definitely be our sheriff's office.
Well, probably, probably best to give a broad description and then allow discretion by the elected officials, court officials, and department heads.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Higgins. Any, any other feedback or question for Margaret on this?
No.
And then just looking at this, the policy for for masking will be considered, we would also be considering that on this item, correct?
Yes, that's true. You could adopt, you could approve them separately if you prefer.
Okay. Why don't, if you'd want to review the masking policy, and then
I can't hear. I don't know if there's a communication issue.
I can't hear either. I don't know.
Okay, Margaret. I had said, would you be willing to go over the masking policy as well, and then we can take action on both of these, these items?
Yes, that would be fine. The
Okay, thank you.
This is titled, "A COVID-19 Pandemic Policy for Universal Masking." It would actually fall under our environmental health and safety policies within the county. The issuing department here is our Center County Risk Management Department, and the responsible officer will be the risk manager. It basically walks through the, the appropriate way to wear a mask. It talks about the care of a mask. It talks about when to wear a mask. So for example, employees must always wear a mask. Let's see if I can find the exact wording here. "The use of masks by employees is mandatory while on the worksite. County government provides cloth masks, and the employee is to wear his, for her to wear during his or her time in a county building." There are instructions. There are exceptions to wearing a mask. If an employee is sitting alone in an office in which a door can be closed, that is an exception. If an employee is using break time to eat or drink while social distancing, that is an exception. If a mask impedes vision or creates an unsafe condition in which to operate equipment or and if there is a health condition, but that health condition must be disclosed to the Human Resources Offices so that they are aware. The, there is compliance attached to this, and because this is a very serious component of what we all need to be doing to mitigate the virus and keep us in the green. And so if an employee does not wear a mask correctly, either, you know, over the nose and mouth, and/or is not wearing a mask at all, a direct supervisor will provide a verbal warning, followed by a written warning. Should an employee be cited a third time for failure to follow these masking requirements, further disciplinary action may be taken, up to and including a loss of pay. Supervisors who fail to follow and/or enforce this policy are also subject to the same disciplinary actions. I know that this sounds perhaps like we're, we're taking this to an extreme, but it really does speak to how important masking is in office buildings. We have people who are close to one another. We have members of the public coming in. This is a, the guidance from the CDC and our Department of Health, and, and we are taking this very, very seriously. So that is the reason for actually putting universal masking into a policy format such as this. Based on your revisions, recommendations for changes, we would take this policy and put it out on our powered DMS system, which would allow each employee to have an electronic copy right away and to sign off on it so that everyone is really clear about what the expectations look like. So that's it. I'll stop, and if you have comments or questions.
Okay. Thank you, Margaret. I'll just begin by saying that there are many challenges during this, this pandemic for employees. We've heard, we've seen today and heard today the employees that were put on furlough or partial reduction of hours. So there, there are many difficult things that we're going through and experiencing. But what the research has shown, with the CDC and the Department of Health here in Pennsylvania has, has shown, is that we know that COVID-19, although it is an ever-evolving virus, that it is a respiratory virus, and it's passed by, by the breath, by breathing, and sneezing and coughing, and that by, by wearing a mask, you can be potentially saving a life. And it's really for those individuals that are asymptomatic, that are not seeing the symptoms and feeling the symptoms, but they still can spread the virus to others and infect them, potentially put them in the hospital or all the way up to death. And so obviously, if an employee is sick or not feeling well, they're, they're asked to go home. So we're not asking sick and people who are experiencing symptoms or are feeling ill to come to work and wear a mask. It truly is for those asymptomatic individuals. But, you know, wearing a mask is, is such a, is such an important way that we can help defeat this virus. And as we know, we're going to be going to the green phase in less than 24 hours. The more that we do the masking when we're out in public and when we're out, when we're at work, is going to be so, so tremendously helpful. And the one thing I, you know, it's just looking out for one another. I think it's, that's the best way to put it, is you're looking out for one another. And it's not, it cannot, it's, it's not the most comfortable thing. It's, it's, it is difficult sometimes, but I think just thinking in the back of your mind, you know, when you have those kind of thoughts, and to our employees, I just recommend, you know, you're doing it for the nurses, you're doing it for loved ones, you're doing it for people who are immunocompromised. It is, it's such an important thing to do. And so we thank all of our employees for doing this, understanding it. But we have been trying to work with, 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 with the research and the guidelines, and this is our, our best approach at this point. And we are, we will be excited when there is a vaccine, and we get through this, and we no longer have to wear masks. But it is one of the best things that we can do to keep, keep each other safe throughout this, throughout this pandemic. So I'm very supportive of the policy, and I do, I do feel and support that we do need to have discipline and, and a measured approach where it's to verbal warning, a written warning, and then, and then action, potentially including loss of pay. So I do agree with that, because I think that we do need to, you know, have some teeth to this, and because of the, the fact that this could be a life or death issue. And, and just from a financial side of the county, if we would have employees get sick due to not having, you know, not wearing the mask or, you know, spread of COVID-19 in our buildings, that's going to be shutting down our operations, and then it affects the services that we provide to our citizens. Also, as we move into the green phase and citizens begin to interact with us, residents begin to interact with us more in the county buildings, there's a potential that we can, and then there's also the potential, obviously, if, if employees themselves get sick, and we would have costs associated with that. And we don't want to have any healthcare costs for the employees to bear, and we certainly want to be mindful of the taxpayer funds when it comes how we're treating our, our employees and with our healthcare. And so just for many of those reasons, I think it's so important.
Oh, Mike, you've kind of frozen up. Mike?
Are we still functional?
I'm still here, but we seem to have lost Mike.
Margaret, are you there?
I, I can hear you, Steve. I can hear you, Mark. I see other people on the screen. I'm sorry, what was that?
Is there anybody else in the call?
Yes. Mark is on the call.
Oh yeah, we still have something like 16 people on the call.
This is Christian. I can still hear you guys. I just can't hear Mike.
I can hear you guys as well. This is Dave.
I think he's dialing back in. It just says that he left the call, so he may be trying to come back in. I think we should just give him a minute to try to get his
Right.
internet back.
Recording is on.
He's back.
I'm at, I'm at the mercy of the Willough Bank Wi-Fi. What can I tell you? So hopefully you heard some of that. I think I was just about to end. I think I was just about at the end. And so maybe that was the good Lord above telling me that I should wrap things up. So I apologize if I missed anything, but, but, but I shared my thoughts about the importance of the masking. So I'll open the floor for any other comments.
Would you like to go next, Steve? Steve?
I'm good, Mark. Everything's good.
All right. I had a couple of things. Maybe you addressed this bit, Mike, toward the, the end when, when you cut out. But at this point, the wearing of the mask when you're around other people is, it's common courtesy. As you mentioned, this disease appears to primarily spread through the air. There are, you know, some cases where it's spread through surfaces, but it's primarily through the air. And most of the incidents they've documented tend to be indoors. So very important that we're wearing masks around other people. And of course, county staff, just in the very nature of their jobs, tend to work with vulnerable citizens, either here in our buildings or when we go out into the community. So very important for staff to wear masks. I do agree it needs to be a graduated policy with multiple steps to it. Every now and again, you know, the mask will just slip below your nose. So, you know, we, we want to give people the opportunity, several opportunities to just get used to a new habit. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion or feedback on the items that Margaret outlined? The first being the employee protocols for working in county offices during a COVID-19 pandemic? And also the policy, COVID-19 pandemic policy, universal masking? Any further discussion, comments, questions on those?
None.
Actually, I do have one. It's probably more for Margaret. Are we going to add these policies into the Power DMS system? And alert employees that we'd like to read them and then sign off on them?
Yes, we are going to, after approval of the policy on the COVID-19, the COVID-19 policy on universal masking, that will be uploaded to the Power DMS system. Employees will be asked to sign off on that, yes. The other protocols will be distributed as we have distributed by emails to everyone.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no further, and then again, these would take effect when, Margaret? Monday?
Pending your approval today, Monday, yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay. All right. Hearing no further questions, your comments would be a motion to approve the policy and the guidelines for working in county offices.
Motion to approve the policy and new guideline for working in Center County offices during the COVID-19 public health crisis.
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you, Margaret, for walking us through that. We appreciate that very, very much. We have personnel items. We have two from the correctional facility. First one is to approve the promotion for Trevor Nichols from full-time correctional officer to a full-time lieutenant at the correctional facility. That would be the first item. Second item is to approve the personnel requisition for a full-time correctional officer. Is there a motion to approve those two items?
Motion to approve the two items at the personnel items at the correctional facility.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on those items? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Nay, as opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries unanimously. Just to report one item for judicial personnel, that would be for Judge R. West is, I'm so sorry. It looks like that is actually an action item, my apologies. And this would be to consider approval of the personnel requisition. Help me out. I'm sorry, Kristen, I think you're on the line. This is, this, do we need to?
No, you do not have to approve this one. This should just be a, this should just be an acknowledgement that the judge has approved a personal requisition.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right. So the personnel requisition for a full-time specialty court probation officer too. Okay, thank you. Moving on to non-personnel items, we have a item for emergency communications. And on the phone with, or on, on the meeting with us is our Director of Emergency Services, Dale Neff. Dale, if you'd like to take the floor, we will give it to you for this item.
I'm presenting for the board's consideration agreement between the county and Tyler Technologies for 24/7 maintenance in support of our computer-rated dispatch in 911 and the mobile component that goes along with this that allows police officers in the field to interact with CAD and receive calls remotely. Next to our personnel, CAD is the lifeblood of modern 911 and has an enormous beneficial impact on the service we provide to the community. The agreement allows Tyler Technology staff to keep regularly involved in the upkeep of our CAD and keeping it strong and healthy. The agreement is effective July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. The cost is $86,078.72, $17,215.74, of which comes from Penn State University. And the remainder of the money comes from the statewide 911 search charge. And I present that for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Dale. Any questions, comments for Dale?
None.
Nope. Well, well presented.
Okay, thank you, Dale. We'll look for a.
Motion to add the agreement with Tyler Technologies to the June 4, 2020 consent agenda.
I will second that.
Been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Carried unanimously. Okay, thank you again, Dale. Moving into our consent agenda, would there be a motion to approve both items in our consent agenda today?
Motion to approve both items in today's consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Excuse me. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Hearing unanimously. Okay. Moving into our last item for the Board of Commissioners meeting, this is a follow-up from the discussion that we had on Tuesday regarding our executive session meetings that we convened on Friday, May 22. Just to, just to, you know, I had asked for this to be on the agenda. I just, I'll say my piece and then if anybody else wants to weigh in and then we can move past this, put it behind us, go forward. We have an, obviously, an election to get to. Next Tuesday that we need to focus on and many other things. Want to share my, 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 my sense on this, which is, I just, I, I, I know that we're going to have challenges doing that as an executive session. I would have preferred that this been considered an emergency meeting of the Board of Commissioners under Act 15 of 2020. But I appreciate Betsy, your, your view as a solicitor, and I respect that. And if that is the will of the board to, to, again, keep it as an executive session and not release the minutes due to a concern about the, about the precedent that that was set. I, I understand that. I just, I just, due to my frustration about some of the misperceptions that are out there about what was discussed and how it was discussed, I feel like a open and transparent minutes, albeit not, you know, again, ideally communicated during the time, I think that would be the best way to do it. But again, I, I just wanted to say, say my piece and we can move on from this and go forward. So if there's any other thoughts or comments, we can, we can look, look towards them at this point and, and then we can go from there.
This is Steve. I believe that on the advice of the solicitor, the executive session discussion should remain confidential. I think the approval of executive session minutes in this case will have a chilling effect in future, future confidential discussions. So I think it should remain executive session and be treated as we traditionally have all executive sessions.
Okay, any other discussion on this?
Yeah, I'd like to mention a couple of things, but I want to make sure that Steve has, has finished.
He has.
Okay.
Yeah, I think, I just, I want to leave you with one of, you know, our positions and concerns were well documented in the public session on Tuesday, and official action was taken and that action was transmitted. So I, I think it's time, you know, with, with less than 14 hours until, until we go into the green phase, I think it's time to move forward and, and let's get prepared for this election.
Yeah, I, I feel we need to follow the advice of the solicitor. As commissioners, the, the rules we follow are measured in the feet, many, many feet long. I am not a lawyer. We have a solicitor on staff that we pay a retainer to, to research these items for us. Our solicitor has looked into this and in her opinion, this is, should be classified as an executive session. I know we have a local news reporter who has looked into this and done quite a bit of research on it as well. But in my opinion, we, I, I need to go with the solicitor. That's why we have them on staff. And as Steve mentioned, we have discussed in public session that we met as a group. We considered the health and safety of our poll workers who are elected and appointed public officials, county staff who assist during the election and county employees that work in the elections department. We also talked about the potential effect the five-day delay could have on local small businesses and other citizens in Center County. And we, as a group, we decided to ask the governor's people a question. And as Commissioner Dershowitz said, or I can't remember now, maybe it was Commissioner Pike, things end up, ended up becoming somewhat misperceived out there. So at this point, I agree to follow the suggestion of the solicitor, but did want to, again, reiterate to the public a rough idea of what the discussion had been during those two meetings that were held on very short notice.
Okay. And we do have our solicitor, Betsy Dupree, on the line. If there's anything you'd want to add to this, Betsy?
No, I think you all stated it correctly.
Okay, thank you, Betsy. So as the consensus, we would, we would, again, not be taking any action and on minutes today or in the future for this, the two executive sessions we held on Friday, May 22. We are in agreement on that and we will go forward. The one thing I will say is it probably will not be the last time that we will have to be convening a discussion with very short notice on a sensitive matter related to COVID-19 that may present some sort of gray area in executive session or public meetings. And so one of the things I, I want to, I think we're all cognizant of now is that when that meeting, when that would occur, if it is an executive session for us appreciating that and, and, you know, again, outlining a reason why it's an executive session. However, if it really doesn't fit into the category of executive session, that we would do a, everything practicable as the act suggests where we get something out on social media to let people know that we're meeting.
You might have dropped out again.
Yeah, you seemed to have frozen up, Mike.
Yeah, I can't hear anything.
I've had, I've had to switch over to my phone. It's, it's that bad in here. I'm on my, I'm on my data. So, you know, I, I can't, again, I can't control the Wi-Fi in here. Well, I'll let RBA know about the issue. But essentially, I was saying that if we could develop some guidelines for us, if we could get, give some feedback to Betsy and Margaret to develop some guidelines for us that if we would have to hold a meeting at it in a timely fashion due to something related to COVID-19, that there's just a little bit of guidelines that we can get. And then, so if we know that, we can alert our team to put something out online that we're going to be holding a meeting and, and go from there. So would we be in agreement with that, just so that we're not in this position again?
That's reasonable and acceptable to me.
Yes, Mike, that, that sounds fine to me as well.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you. Any, any questions on that, Betsy or Margaret?
Michael, I do have something for the good of the order whenever this issue is wrapped up and it's more of an open discussion.
Okay, yeah, if we just, once we hear from Betsy and Margaret, I think we'll be good to go to go to that commissioner. Thank you.
Mike, I think that's a good plan.
Thank you, Betsy. Okay. All right. So moving on with the agenda here. Right. Any executive sessions to report, Margaret?
Yes, the Board of Commissioners met an executive session on Tuesday, May 26 from 11:20 a.m. to 11:43 a.m. to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay, thank you. All right. Steve, if you wanted to, under, under any other discussion, please go ahead.
Okay, well, I just got a text message from Senator Jake Corman a few moments ago that I think is, is worthy of, of some, some note because it appears that there is legislation being passed today that would give Center County $14.6 million in CARES Act funding.
Center County.
I'm not sure exactly what all the nuances of that are, but whatever $14.6 million in CARES Act funding, I think that's probably a very positive thing for our community. So that's good, that's good news, I believe.
Is that, Commissioner, do you know if that is for the county government or is that for the county and other entities?
I don't know. The, the text message just says Center County gets $14.6 million in CARES Act that we are passing today, which I think is one, whatever, whatever that means, whether it's county government or whether it's distributed through the community, I'm sure it will be a welcome resource for, for whoever receives it. We'll have to follow up and if there are, if the media is on the, on the call, they can probably do the research and find out what specifically that indicates.
Okay. Well, thank you for the.
Please.
The news.
Please, please do hear the good news. But yeah, we're, we'll, we'll need to determine, is that primarily going to Center County government? Or is that Center County government, 35 municipalities, broad variety of fire companies, ambulance services, the hospital? In the near future, it'd be nice to know exactly where that's getting distributed to.
Well, assuming that it passes and assuming that it, you know, it, it, it goes through, I think that's the problem you want to have.
Yeah, well, Steve, thank you for that. Please pass along our thanks to Senator Corman for that and, and also to our federal legislators as well. So that is, that is good news all around. So. Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments before we look for a motion? Or with the, Evan, Evan Hinckley has joined us here in the room and myself at the Willow Bank. the, Evan Hinckley has joined us here in the room and myself at the Willabank and we have some other members of the press online. So before we adjourn the commissioners meeting, we look, look to see if there's any questions here. So we'll, we'll start with, we'll start with any folks on the phone. I know Marley is on. Okay, great. Yeah, Marley, we'll, we'll turn it over to you for some questions.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
So I have two questions. My first one is just some background information and then hopefully we'll be able to move on from the discussion about minutes. But why is today's discussion about the minutes a discussion item and why is a vote not being taken?
Sure. So we, we would only be taking a vote if we were going to be approving minutes. The fact that, the fact that we've already categorized it as an executive session and that there's not, there's not a majority of the board that's willing to consider it as minutes, we wouldn't be taking a vote to approve minutes. So there's no vote to be taken.
Okay. And then my second question, with Friday's, last Friday's meetings being classified executive sessions, I understand that the commissioners can't discuss the specific details outside of, you know, personnel matters and the discussion from Tuesday's meeting. However, Commissioner Pike, your Facebook statement from the weekend is public. And in that statement, you say the initial request to delay Center County's reopening was a unanimous decision. And Commissioner Dershowitz, you're quoted as saying you wanted Center County to reopen from the start, meaning on both calls. So were you, Commissioner Dershowitz, not supportive of that supposed unanimous decision?
Well, I will tell you, my position now and my position was is I wanted Center County to be open as quickly as possible. And without getting into the details of the, of the conversation of the executive session, I'm going to reiterate that point again.
And Commissioner Pike, do you have anything you want to add to that?
Well, I'm in the, so I will stand by my statement that I made on Friday. However, since it's now categorized as an executive session, I think it's important to respect the, the discussion that we had. Again, I would be willing to, again, I'm supportive of having the minutes there because I think it was such a, a, a important discussion and, but I, I want to keep the confidentiality of, of an executive session there. But I do, I will acknowledge the fact that that was, that post was there on the weekend and I, I, you know, I will acknowledge that the post was there. So that, that's, that's essentially where, where I'm at. And again, we'll, we'll move forward from this and we will do our darndest to make sure that when we have conversations of this nature, we have everything clearly outlined. And we do it in a way that we, all three of us have agreement on and appreciate if we're having a emergency meeting, a public meeting, a, or an executive session.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Marley. Yeah, Evan, we'll turn the floor over to you for any questions here.
If you want to repeat what I'm saying so people can hear it better, if you want to mine, the first question is, on Friday's discussion, was there a motion, ever a motion to go into executive session? Or vote?
Sure. So Evan's question is, was there ever a motion to go into executive session? So when we have executive sessions, we, we appreciate there are items that we discussed that fall into the executive session category. And so this would have existed under the personnel category due to the fact that we were discussing the personnel in our elections office, actually employees, and the concerns for their safety. And in addition to that, our poll workers who are elected officials and they are compensated, there could be an argument that they're also personnel of the county, but the true, the true personnel discussion would have been with our, our employees. So we have had exec. You can close the door. Sorry, Evan. Yeah. We have had executive sessions where we will, we will, we will have a discussion on something and then we'll say, you know, this is a discussion, this is an executive session. So it's, it's not uncommon for us to, to do that.
The one to follow up is, can you retroactively declare something in executive session?
Betsy, can you hear that question? Evan was asking, can you retroactively declare something in executive session?
I'm not sure that that's even an applicable question. This isn't, you all meet and have executive sessions, hence why you have something on your regular agenda that says an executive session report. I, I don't, I guess I don't understand what would make it retroactive versus any other action in which you take, including an executive session you might have in the next three or four days and then report at your next meeting. So I'm not sure I, I understand the meat use of the word retroactive.
Under the pretext that originally, at least stated by you, Commissioner Pike, that it was, the context of it was perhaps of a emergency COVID meeting first, changing the term, does that make sense?
Did you hear that, Betsy?
I think so. I mean, I, I have to say, as your solicitor, you asked me an opinion and I gave it to you. I was not one who classified the meeting from point A to point B. And, and I, I don't see it as a retroactive action by the board because it's clear to me from the comments made by other commissioners, they felt the conversation was a confidential conversation.
Right. It doesn't have to be an executive session. You don't have, you don't have to say at the beginning of an executive session, this is an executive session. You just, the obligation is at the next public meeting, you have to report that you had an executive session. I'm asking you, Betsy, that, that's the, that's the, that's the, that's the threshold.
You simply have an obligation to report in a public session that you held an executive session. As Margaret pointed out, the time period of the same and what the topic of discussion was. There, there's no thinking about timing. There are meetings where you will go into, you will adjourn to go into an executive session, but it's also probable and very likely that in a lot of scenarios, you have executive sessions that occur in between your public meetings. Unfortunately for the commissioners, you meet almost weekly or almost twice a week, but a lot of our municipalities meet once a month. So they might have several in between a meeting if they had some personnel issue, union negotiations, litigation matters, any of those kinds of things. So I, I think the obligation is to report it. I don't, I guess I can't really address the question beyond that.
I think, I think you're satisfied with that answer. Evan, Evan, yep, satisfied. Any other questions? Okay. Any other questions from any other folks on the phone here? Okay, seeing none. Would there be a motion? Any other items that come before the Board of Commissioners? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn the Board of Commissioners meeting?
Sorry, getting my mute off. Motion to end today's commissioners meeting.
I will second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion on that?
No.
Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Motion is carried. We're gonna end the recording here. And then we're gonna call to order the salary board. Okay, here we go. Trying to figure out how I turn off the recording. Ah, there it is, maybe. We might just have to go right into it. I am not seeing, I'm not seeing how to stop the recording. So, all right, we're just gonna go right into salary board meeting then. Is there a, we're gonna call to order the salary board meeting? Is there any public comment at this time for the salary board? Hearing none, we will look to minutes from our Tuesday, May 21 salary board meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes from May 21st?
A second. Steve can have that one.
It's been moved and seconded. Any, any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, aye? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion is carried. Just to double check, I don't know if we have President Judge West on the phone with us for this item for court administration. If we don't, this would be a, proving the rate for Stephen Duncan at $19.79 an hour effective July 6th, pay period 15. The President Judge is appointing Mr. Duncan to full-time law clerk in a court administration office. Is there any questions or comments on this before we look for a motion?
No.
Hearing none, remote.
Motion to approve the rate for Stephen Duncan at $19.79 an hour?
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye? Motion is carried. Okay. Our next item, next item on the agenda is to approve the promotion change in title of Cody Young from full-time specialty court probation officer two. And this is taking Mr. Young to full-time deputy chief probation officer. And we have the director of our probation office, Ryan Smeltzer, on with us. Ryan, thank you for your patience. We'll turn the floor over to you for any comments.
Yeah, absolutely. Good morning, guys. Can you guys hear me okay? I hope.
Loud.
Okay. Okay. All right. Appreciate it. So you guys might be aware that this position was newly created. However, it was, it was originally previously filled by Ron Millward, who retired at the end of March. And in creating this position, we added additional duties on top of what Ron Millward's position was as a supervisor. So at this point in time, we feel like it's appropriate to have Mr. Young be compensated as such and enter him into a step B rather than the step A. I think if you have the paper in front of you, you see even filling it at this step, there's a significant savings of, I think it shows in 2020 of over $33,000.
Yes, thank you. Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Smeltzer on this?
Mr. Smeltzer answered my question about why it's being put in as a step B instead of a step A.
Okay. All right. Hearing no further discussion, would there be a motion on this?
Motion to approve the promotion change in department title for Cody Young from specialty court probation officer to deputy chief probation officer.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Hearing none?
I guess just, well, I'm sorry, just to, just to make note real quick that this is effective July 5th.
Yes. Okay, great. That would be pay period 15. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
No, not a worry. Thank you very much. Okay, all favorite motion, say aye. Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Is carried. Anything else to come before the salary board before we look to adjourn at 11:07?
Yes, actually there is. I have a follow-up to my previous text message with Senator Corman.
Well, it's.
Oops, I'm sorry.
No, I mean, you can go ahead, Steve. It wouldn't really be a salary board item, but go ahead.
Yeah, it's just more of a public announcement kind of a thing. I asked who will receive these funds? And the answer back was the county will with a list of criterion on what it can be used for. So something to look, something to look forward to further, further discussion.
Okay, well, that is welcome news. And maybe it's, maybe it would be used for salaries. So there we go. We, you know, there we go.
That's a significant amount of.
It is, Steve. Yeah, you're absolutely right. Absolutely right. Now, I don't want to hold my breath, but hopefully we're not going to learn that we've been cut $14 million in our state allocation. So we'll, we'll, we'll see, we'll see how, we'll see how it all plays out. But if it ends up where it's $14 million new, new money and we don't get cut, that'd be terrific.
We'll see what, we'll see where it goes.
Absolutely. All right. Hearing no further items, we look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, second.
Right. Thank you, everybody. Have a night.
Thank you. Thank you.
You too.